Well, there's more. Obviously, people out here in the forest have seen all of them. It's what we need. That's what we needed to know. I want to have two. If you do it first, the sign.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to this month's regular IPC meeting. It'll be a fairly brief agenda tonight. Got two items. If you can please rise for the invocation and pledge.
For those of you who were here last month, we pray for those folks affected by Hurricane Florence. Tonight, we need to remember those who've been affected by Hurricane Michael. So, please join me. Family parlor grateful for this today. We pray for those who've been affected by Hurricane Michael in Panhandle, Florida and Southwest Georgia. Be with those in special ways as they try to build their life back again. Be with those families who've lost loved ones in this terrible event. Now, I ask you to bless the seat of this meeting for those who are present. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure. The United States of America and to the parliament for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, good, healthy, and just for all.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Royce, for the invocation. All right. I was suspended with the meeting procedures. I think most people in attendance are familiar with those. I just ask that you all respect those that are speaking at that time. First order of business is to approve the amendments from the September 18th meeting, subject to any corrections or amendments. Sorry. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor, show hands, please. Okay, we got four. One abstention.
Absent.
Okay. The first item is a village preservation sign review and approval. VP 3791 at 511 Ocean Boulevard for the business known as Zoners Pizza. Excuse me, sir. Just a moment. If we could have the staff report, please.
Shannon, absolutely. Stephanie, Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. Good evening, commissioners. So, this is VP 3791, and this is 511 Ocean Boulevard. The applicant is Wesley Jones, and the business is Zoners Pizza. And it's a 3790 parcel, and the zoning is village mixed use and island preservation design overlay, and it's currently commercial use. Now, here's the property right here with a star. And the project description, the sign that they're proposing is actually currently in existence. It is 48-inch diameter and a circular sign. It is lit with LED, and it is a wall sign. It is the only sign that proposing is a one-wall sign. And it does advertise Zoners Pizza Wings and Waffles Restaurant. They have installed one of the building, and the county does have an open code enforcement case because a sign was installed before going through the Island Planning Commission for review. And the applicant has been working with us, and we've been trying to get onto a meeting so that they can get their review and decision made and be in compliance. And the zoning requirements for a sign in this location will be 24 square feet, and the current signage meets that, so it's only 12.6 square feet. As I mentioned, there is only one sign for this business. These are your standards for review under Section 709.4 under Island Preservation. And here is a photo of the sign. It is internally lit. And there is another business in this same shopping center that does have a wall sign as well. And the applicant did mention that the box that you're seeing that looks like a light is actually a dimmer, so it can be adjusted to different brightness levels. And these are your motions. You can move to approve, move to defer, or move to deny the application. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And the applicant, Mr. Jones, is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Leaf. The applicant, please come forward. Introduce yourself, please.
Mr. Duncan, my... Sorry about that. My name's Wesley Jones. I'm one of the owners over at Zoners Pizza. It's actually formerly Jonesy's, so it's just been re-signed. That was the difference. So... And actually, that sign that we're talking about, the gray thing that's on there, it doesn't work. When we reinstalled that sign, we took that out, so it doesn't work.
This is the box with the rims on it?
Yeah, it was just an emergency light. It doesn't work anymore.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll have public comments, and we'll open that up to those that would be in favor of the sign as designed. Okay. Seeing none being on, we'll invite those that might be opposed to the sign. Okay. Any further discussion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion, but first, I'd just like to say, I don't understand why we can't get those folks in the village area that put these signs up that don't go through the process. We get the signs put up, and then we have to approve it. I don't have a problem with the sign, but somehow, Ms. Thompson, maybe if we can educate those folks, you know, about the process that you do need to go through and your permit, and before you spend a lot of money, you might put up a sign that's not, you know, compliant. So, anyway, I make a motion to approve application VP 3791.
Second. Discussion? Okay. Call for both. Are those in favor of the motion? Okay. It's unanimous. Okay. Move to a public hearing. The next item is ZM 3890 Village Creek Landing. It's a change of zoning request. And I'd invite Ms. Leaf for staff report.
So, commissioners, I'll give a staff report, just going over some specifics, and then the applicant does have a presentation they would like to present to you as well before the public hearing begins. So, this is ZM 3890 Village Creek Landing. The address is 526 South Harrington Road. It is a 1.52-acre parcel. The zoning is currently conservation-preservation, and the existing land use is as a dock, an event center, outdoor tour operations that are based out of there. The proposed zoning is to do planned development, and their proposed land use is very similar to what they are currently operating on the property. It is a limited commercial marina, social gathering event center, and residential unit, or residential dwelling that would be accessory to a wildlife refuge. And the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, does state that it is conservation, and also looked at the draft 2018 plan, which will be adopted, or is proposed to be adopted this month, and it also had the same future land use as well. This is the property at the end of South Harrington with a star on it. And so, they do have submitted a planned development text that was included in your packet that does outline their uses, and I know the applicant will go into more detail about these. But it is limited commercial marina, social gathering event center, and then the accessory dwelling unit, or dwelling unit accessory to a wildlife refuge, and more details are in the PD text. This is the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan, this 2008 showing the land use, the future land use plan. And then, these are your evaluation standards. This is Section 1103 in the zoning ordinance, and this is for a zoning amendment. And the comments to these are included in your staff report, but these are your standards. And just a few features of what's currently out on the property. This is the existing building that they do events in, as well as the existing dock. And at this time, they're not proposing any changes to the building or the dock. They are proposing to do potentially a deck between a current, the existing gazebo and this dwelling, or this building. And then, this is the existing boat ramp, which is on the property that currently has public access. And as I mentioned in the staff report, there have been a lot of questions about the boat ramp. There is a separate agreement that the county and the applicant are currently working through, but that issue is separate from the PD that's before you today. And here is the site plan. So, PDs are required to have a site plan shown with them, and because it is under three acres, this would be the approved site plan. And so, they have included that in their application. And here's just kind of a close-up of the existing facilities on the site plan. And then, these are your possible motions, and this is a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time, or we can wait until after the applicant makes a presentation. Either way.
Sure. Any questions for Ms. Leaf? Okay. We invite the applicant. Please come forward. Introduction, please.
John McQuig on behalf of Village Creek Landing LLC. And I have a brief part of our presentation, if you'll allow me.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, while they do that, let me offer a brief clarification of the presentation you just saw. The boat ramp is actually in county right-of-way. It's not on the property owned by the applicant. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you for clarifying that. I heard that, and I was wondering.
Block, blocking anyone this way? I'll attempt on a block anyway. Now, this is the property that we're talking about. If you haven't been down to Village Creek Landing...
Mr. McQuig, we may need to use a microphone.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's for the people in the back.
This is the property we're talking about. If you haven't been to Village Creek Landing, it's pretty basic. You see the house down there. Stephanie, does this have a pointer on it?
It's at the top.
Okay. So, there's the existing structure. There's the existing gazebo. There's the existing docks. This photograph was taken in 2011. Nothing's changed for way more than 25, 30 years to these structures. It's been there. Here's the boat ramp in use at the time of this photograph. Here's South Harrington Road. This is what some term law has been in the past about the parking area. And as stated already, the county and we are working on a permanent solution, or at least a very long-term solution, to cure disagreements about ownership and use of the parking area. We're still in the process of passing documents back and forth. Hopefully, we'll have that resolved within the next week or so. All right. So, there's the property. But who are we? A local family. Been here for a long time. We're going to protect this property. We're going to maintain its existing uses and not allow it to be developed in the future. Oddly, this property has been zoned incorrectly from the beginning. So, we're asking you to allow us to use the property as it has historically been used. That's all we're doing. Clarifying the past and current use to be allowed uses. So, the past uses. Just beside the property, you can see in some other photographs down here, used to be a place called Cuzies. There's been write-ups in numerous books and the Brunswick News. It was a well-known place. After Cuzies, PNM used the property to transport all of their things to Little St. Silens. After PNM, and what most people remember is Charlie and Norma Yawn. They're the ones that built that structure down there. They're the ones that really used it. A whole lot of folks from this community and outside this community remember going down there and enjoying a cold drink and a hot meal with the Yawns. After the Yawn stopped using it, there's been some more recent uses, which have been consistent with those past uses. Howards used it for a prolonged period of time. At the same time that Howards began using it, another local company began using the docks and parking commercial vessels down there, meaning there are charter fisher boats down there. And the operation of kayaks, canoes out of that same spot has gone on since 2009 to present. Strad Hall Caver uses it since 2014 until today. Those uses are exactly the same thing that we want to be continuing the use of our property. Not changing it. Again, there's the property. Our proposed use, same as existing use. Site plan, again. This is a little bit more zoomed in than what Mrs. Leaf showed us. This area that's highlighted in red is the area that the county attorney's office and I have been working on with regard to the proposed lease easement, permanent agreement. In yellow, those are the property boundaries. Down here, this cutout, that shows the future deck layout. That's what we anticipate building between this structure and that structure. It'll lay on top of the grass that's out there to level it out. So, there's no development planned. And I hate the word "planned development." We're not developing this property. It's not going to be developed. But the PD text would allow permitted uses of a limited commercial marina. Limited, meaning that we are not going to use it for the storage or sale of fuel or the repair of boats. Also permitted is the event center. That's the same existing use that it's had. We're restricting that no aerial fireworks would be shot off on our property. We might use sparklers, but no aerial. It's just too much. But I know that a lot of folks in the community use the boat ramp area to shoot off some fireworks to laud for, and they had a hootin' time. If the county wants to allow that, that's fine. There is the residential use. Don't be concerned about that. All we're trying to do is mimic the existing CP text, and the CP text mentions the residential use, but it doesn't limit it. We want to limit the residential use. That's a big deal. We don't want this property to be developed. We don't want condos down there. We don't want multifamily uses down there. Because there's no definition in your current zoning, we could be out here arguing about how we could potentially develop that property for a, quote, caretaker's place. We want to prevent that from happening in the future. So, we've specifically said that it can't be used for those. The boat ramp. We have language in our PD text as well with regard to the boat ramp. That property out there, the red area beyond the gate, could be potentially a subdivided piece of this property to be sold to a land trust or to the county in the future. We reserve the ability to do that. I think it's a wise thing to do. The other thing is that we have a provision in there for a permanent or long-term parking agreement. So, in summary, Village Creek Landing is now a limited commercial marina, social gathering event center. In the future, if you grant this rezoning, it's going to stay the same. However, the things that will change are that you're going to prohibit with the granting this rezoning, the storage of fuel on the property, no boat and motor repairs, aerial fireworks, and no multifamily or condos. So, I'd ask you to vote in favor of this rezoning. Commissioners, I have my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Thank you. I'm Mr. McQuig. Sorry. Any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question per se, but I would like to say, I would like to say I'm glad it would not be residential, multi-family dwelling. So, that is a relief, that there'll be no residential building there. So, I'm delighted, you know, for that. And I did have a couple of questions, I think. I spoke to real earlier today, so that takes care of some of them. One thing you stated about limited commercial marina.
So, commercial. You know, that's a fighting words sometimes. It's used for producing income. We have three motorboats parked down there that pay dockage fees. That's the commercial part of it. In addition, the kayaks and the non-motorized vessels that are launched from that area produces income that we benefit from. So, that's the limited commercial use. All we're simply doing is defining what's that limited commercial use.
And one other thing. You mentioned about restaurant. See, when I think of a restaurant, I think of people going in, ordering a meal, you know, sit-down meal, with meal, may not have waiters or waitress. Okay. I can see these, you're having a social event, and you're serving food or whatever. So, when you're talking about a rest... You're not talking about a restaurant per se where you have a kitchen and all of that, where people come in place and order for a meal. Is that what you're talking about for a restaurant?
The potential for a limited restaurant is there. Howards ran Howards Witherhouse as a licensed, county-approved restaurant there for several years. Before that, the Yawns ran a limited restaurant there for many years. So, the idea today of opening up a shop as a restaurant there is absurd. Perhaps sometime in the future, that could be done, but we'd have to be sensitive to the use.
Sorry. Other questions?
Mr. McQuig, so, in your presentation, which I liked, I don't feel like that property was ever incorrectly rezoned, because you can look at it and tell that there's much all surroundings. So, conservation-preservation obviously seems like appropriate. And what has been going on for 40 or 50 years was actually against the, what's allowed in conservation-preservation. So, my thoughts are, you know, and obviously, codes were not being enforced. So, what you're asking for has been going on for 40 or 50 years. So, why not ask for a conditional use permit for these activities that have already been going on? And since it has been going on so long, kind of grandfathered in, rather than, like, you admitted yourself, you don't like the term planned development text, and, you know, it does come with connotations, so why?
So, why? Well, the easy answer to the conservation, I mean, to the conditional use permit is it's not allowed. Conditional use permit for the CP zoning, you don't have the allowance to do what we're doing. So, that's the easy answer. Grandfathered in. We've had multiple discussions with Mrs. Leaf, Mr. Roy, multiple other people in the county about grandfathered in. We're taking this step through the rezoning process as a more civilized way to going to court and having the judge make the determination that, yes, we're grandfathered in. The benefit is that we have these limitations we're putting on the property by the rezoning. Should we go to court, and should the judge say, yes, you're grandfathered in, those limitations aren't on it. So, we're voluntarily reducing the impact of this property by asking you to rezone the property, then if we simply use a big stick and go to the court and say, Judge, it's not fair.
Well, originally, you asked for conditional use, correct?
Conditional use for a commercial marina, because in speaking with county staff, that was what appeared to be the appropriate method of going forward. But, as you'll recall, or maybe not, this was pulled from the agenda a couple of months ago because we looked at it more carefully. Staff looked at it, and we'd said, you know, we're going to have some better definitions here. The zoning isn't right. For what you're telling us that you want to use it for, we need to have a better definition, and that's what we've done. We're better definitions.
And so, I had another question I thought, and I was absent at the last meeting, so...
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. As far as, you know, changing the zoning, I know when your application says PD CP, it's actually taking it entirely out of CP and putting it into PD.
No, that's not absolutely correct. It is PD. The intention, though, is to mimic all of the other things that are within the CP. So, normally, as I understand it, and county staff can correct me on this, normally, when you do a PD text, you mirror another existing zoning. We're attempting to mirror the existing CP zoning for the use of the property, and that's why it's PD CP.
So, my next thought is about the boat ramp, which I know is a separate issue. How that parking area is not a separate issue. That's part of your, or the property. And I know, as you and I discussed that at great lengths at the site visit, so I know you have a lease agreement with the county in works. You told me that, and I've discussed it. What's the holdup?
You're asking the wrong person.
And I understand that. But I want to, I mean, you know, I know a lot, that's a lot of people's concern in the community, that there's the boat ramp and...
So, I would tell you, I had a discussion with Mr. Roy today, and I told him, if there's any rocks that I'm going to throw, I'm going to throw it at him. I'm throwing the rock at Mr. Roy, and I'm saying, hey, I gave you the proposed lease way over a month ago. I've gotten nothing back in writing yet. We've had discussions, so I think that question is better pointed towards the county attorney's office than me.
And I did what you said, and I emailed and asked. And I asked, and I don't know that answer yet.
And Mrs. Kate, we're trying to be proactive, get ahead of it, and do the right thing, and get this lease in place. We had the meetings with the DNR to verify what we needed to do for that lease, and we came up with terms that we put into the proposed lease, and that is, hey, county, you've got to do these things so that you can get the state money to fix up the boat ramp and to make it better for the community. We went out there without prompting and made all that happen. So, nobody's pushing us and saying, hey, McQuig, you need to go do this, this, and this. We saw what needed to be done and went proactively to try to make it happen.
Right. Okay. That's all for now.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant?
Thanks. Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Kate made a valid point. We don't have a PD CP district. We only have conservation districts and planned development districts. So, we, when we vote on it, we're going to be voting on a planned development, not a planned development CP district. So, this is not accurate. Your document's not accurate in that regard. And that needs to be changed to just a CP, because we don't have this district. Clear?
You know, we submitted to the county staff, and we never got any comments back that it needed to be renamed.
Okay. We don't have that district, though, what you're proposing in your...
Everything that we're proposing is actually in that text. So, if you take away the name that says PD CP, everything else that's in that document is accurate.
Well, I just want to be accurate on what kind of district we're voting on, and if the district we're going to be voting on is planned development, not PD CP. I just want you to understand that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other issue I have that I have questions about is there's a restaurant in here, as was mentioned earlier. And what about the parking for the restaurant? Where is that going to be?
We have parking both inside the gate and outside the gate.
Okay. I don't know how many, how, do you have sufficient parking? Has anybody mentioned the parking for the restaurant? How many closes you would need, or...
I believe we have sufficient parking. Yes, ma'am.
Looking for that. Where are your open storage spaces going to be?
Open storage spaces?
That's what it says. It says... It says, in addition, open storage spaces, you've got open storage spaces, I just wondered where they would be.
Sure, well, I mean, we have the gazebo, we have places on the dock where kayaks are stored, we have underneath the handicap ramp, there are open spaces for storage. If you're, if you have one specific question about...
My question, I guess, would be, do you intend on building more open storage spaces?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
There is the possibility that we've discussed, it's not anything that we have on the plate right now that may happen, and that is, at the gate, we think it might be a good thing to build a, a structure to hold kayaks for folks in the community, kind of like lockers, where you would slide your kayak, life jacket, and paddle in there, lock it up, you'd pay a small fee, this would be good for people living condos or going to space in their houses, and you'd lock up your boat there. When you want to come, launch it at the landing, you simply unlock it, put it in the boat ramp and go. That's, that is a proposal that we have thoughts maybe in the future of doing, nothing in writing at this point.
Okay. Also, in your social gathering event center, is that the present building?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Your accessory uses, do you have any additional accessory uses planned?
We do not.
Okay. I guess that's all I have. But I, you do need to change the text, because we don't have that zoning district.
Sorry, Ms. Leaf, or Mr. Worley, can you comment on the label that's been given to the PD text? Is that, is that, is that something staff has chosen, or is that the applicant's designation?
So in our discussions, we've been talking about the straight PD, but I believe there was a time that we did do PD, we would have a designation, but I think that's a change that could definitely be made, is to just take off the CP and just refer to it strictly as PD. That is correct, yeah. I see in older documents that we often called plans PDG, and so I think there was a time that we used a different labeling, but currently it's just straight PD. So if you all want to make that change, if you make a decision tonight, then that can be amended.
She said we don't have that district, and we could make that change when we make the motion or something like that, to change the text of what it's supposed to be. Or just PD.
Okay. All right. Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. McQuig.
Chairman, after the comment period, if you do have additional questions, feel free to ask me, I'll be glad to come back up and...
Yeah, please stand by, I'm sure we're going to have comments and questions. Okay, so we're going to, excuse me, we're going to start the public hearing session now. Just a reminder, we'll have thirty minutes allocated for those in favor, and thirty minutes allocated for those that may be against, and five minutes for each speaker. So I invite those that would like to speak in favor, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Alan. My name is Lynn HoShaw. I'm going to be a little bit different in my quick presentation. I would like to ask of you and all of the audience, just raise your hands, if you would, all of you who have been here for over thirty years, let's see a show of hands. I'm visually impaired, so it's hard for me to see, but please. Okay. I've been here for thirty years, I'm a carpetbagger from Atlanta, I am still new here on St. Simon's. I am very envious of all of you who have, in fact, been here in Glen County and in St. Simon's. This is just an amazing opportunity for all of us as fellow property owners and community persons.
Yeah, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Linton, please, please address the commission's table.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And could you please adjust...
And the name is HoShaw, Lynn HoShaw.
Thank you, Mr. HoShaw, just pause a second. Can you adjust the volume for him?
Sure.
Okay.
Big mouth.
Well, you don't have to, I understand, you don't have to stand quite so close. Okay, thank you.
I came in nineteen eighty-eight. I was privileged to visit the Yawn establishment and recognize the wondrous nature of, splendor of nature, watch the eaglets at sunset. It was an amazing event to be there. I must, I'm sorry, say disagree with John in his presentation, the beer was not that cold, but the shrimp were very good. I also must tell you that my personal fondness of the property stems to even my daughter's birthday. We had a sixteenth birthday party for her there on that premise. The kids that were there, the parents that were there, could not have been more delighted at that presentation. Wonderful opportunity for us to continue on in our community with this kind of facility. I urge you to consider Mr. McQuig, as he is owner, to proceed towards Thursday with this proposition that will be only good for our community. He is an outstanding member of this community, he's making a very warm presentation to you. We will all be well-served in this community by the continuance of this with the limitations that the applicant is proposing. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Okay. Thank you. Other speakers in favor, please?
Yes, I'm speaking in favor. I'm Julian Smith. I've lived on St. Simon's Island, or enjoyed a home here for the last twenty-five years. I also, like many people in this room, enjoyed having a seafood, a shrimp meal at the Yawns. We usually brought our own cold beer, looking out over the marsh. And I certainly support the continuation of the existing uses on this property. And I was delighted several months ago, when I learned the property had been purchased by Mr. McQuig and his brother-in-law, Michael Gallon, who has operated those very fine and educational kayak tours. As someone who grew up in the bayou country of Louisiana, I used to enjoy with my parents, and then later with my friends, eating at very similar places on rivers, on Lake Ponchartrain or in the bayou country. So I like this kind of really small-scale, informal venue, gathering venue, something that has evolved over the years. So this is something good for the community. I'm hoping that you will come to a very firm definition of what limited commercial marina means. And as for the issue of the wildlife refuge, that is, the ability to have a caretaker's residence associated with a wildlife refuge, in that the small piece of property owned by the applicants is not really a wildlife refuge, although it looks out over habitat for wildlife, and that's part of the enjoyment of the property. I am not sure that permitting a separate building, a residential building of unknown size for a wildlife refuge, I think you really should separate that issue and recommend to the Board of Commissioners at their meeting on Thursday that the wildlife refuge caretaker's residence be separated from the, from the application. Now, as the area immediately south of South Harrington Road is more intensely developed, as the area between South and North Harrington Road is developed with all kinds of new developments, and there are going to be a lot of people who can walk there, bicycle there, this can be a neighborhood restaurant and gathering place for anniversary parties, weddings, celebrations, et cetera. Given that the county commission has taken preliminary plat approval away from this board and kept it to itself, and given that several weeks ago, the Director of Community Development approved a preliminary plat for a twenty-five-lot subdivision called Village at, I'm sorry, what is it called? The Park at Village Creek, thank you, The Park at Village Creek. There's no telling how much more development is going to fill in the gaps in that area. Now, that's going to be good for business at the landing at Village Creek. I'm not sure that all of this development is a good thing for the whole community, but I want the community to know that the other shoe has been dropped. The planning division is starting to approve preliminary plots without any...
Mr. Smith. Ms. Smith, thank you, thank you. All right. Other speaker in favor?
Good evening, I'm Bill Hodges. I live on St. Simon's Island. This has been a very, very special place on the island for many years, many of us have enjoyed it. I think it's a great proposal to continue our ability to enjoy this very, very special place, and urge your recommendation of approval.
Thank you.
My name is Rob Mueller, also a resident of St. Simon's, and I'm here to speak in favor of what's being proposed. I think it's a very thoughtful and sensitive approach to how to develop the property. I think it'll continue to be an asset for the residents of St. Simon's and the people that visit St. Simon's, and it'll be more accessible than it has been, which I think is a very good thing. I like to kayak and fish Village Creek, so I'm glad to see that the parking is part of the resolution and part of the discussion that you guys are having, so that we can continue to use it. Been to several events there, it's truly a unique property. I think you've got a unique owner, offering the limitations that they are offering to you, and the fact that they don't want any residential, you know, that's very unique, I think. So my vote would be for you guys to approve the PD zoning with the limitations that have been offered by the current owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Other speakers, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Let me defray from my prepared, unprepared comments for a minute to recognize Officer Michael as one of the outstanding College of Coastal Georgia Criminal Justice graduates, and commend him for the job he has done on behalf of this community.
Thank you.
My name is Duane Hes, I've lived on St. Simon's for forty-eight years. I know the Gallon family, I've known them for almost as long as I've lived here. I don't know of very many families that I consider more honest and hardworking and environmentally conscious than the Gallons. I worked with Michael Gallon at Village Creek Landing after I retired from DNR. I operated a charter fishing and ecotour business in conjunction with Michael sharing the boat, the Norma, who was named after Norma Yawn, with Michael. And I would urge your approval of this proposal, it's a great one for this area and a great one for, for St. Simon's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Missy New, and I am here as the immediate past chair of the Brunswick-Golden Miles Chamber of Commerce. Last week, we had the privilege to go out to the facility, almost all of our executive board was there, was, Michael did a great job of sharing with us the plan and what they hoped to accomplish there, and we just hope he passes it, we think it'll be a great asset for the community, and, and the chamber was certainly impressed with what they planned to do, and the Gallon family's always been a great steward of the, of the environment in our community, so we hope he'll pass it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Valerie Sando, I've been here well over thirty years, Mr. HoShaw. And I too have known the Gallons all these years, and have seen what they've done for our community, for the environment, and for our youth, and for upcoming generations. And what they're doing for us is not only for our community, but it's for their family as well. They have a huge family here on this island, and they do not want any backstabbing, they want to just grow up for the next generations to come. I urge you to vote in favor of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please, could you clarify your, your family name, please?
Valerie Sando.
San...
Sando, S-A-N-D-O-W.
Thank you. All right, other speakers in favor?
Yes, I'm Frank Seraphini, I'm a builder on the island. Can you hear me?
No.
Frank Seraphini.
Okay.
Pleasure, thank you. I've been a builder on the island for over twenty years, so I know what change is all about, I'm kind of responsible for a little bit in a modern way, but this is something that is old-school. Been there with my daughters, launching boats, events, and the look on their face after a day, and they say, that's great, Dad. We don't have many places left on the island, if, if any, that we can take our family to, an event, have a waterfront, social gathering, and it's a special place. It would be sad if we didn't approve this to keep it just the way it is. We've got a lot of change coming, and again, I'm going to be responsible for some of it, but this is one place, we really do need to vote in favor of this to stay just the way it is. I, I urge you, that's how I feel about it, very strongly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Robbie Williamson, and I've also lived here my whole life. I grew up in Dunbar Creek Plantation, just down the street this way, and I currently live North Harrington, so I have been in and around this property for almost my entire life, and I've known the Gallons about as long. And I would encourage you also to vote in favor of this, asking for the property to continue to be used the way it has been for fifty years, the access the public has, as close as it does to the ramp, and being able to work out something with parking, and then some continued access at the rest of that, is just terribly exciting. And the idea that we, we get to put some limiting factors in there as well, and restrict us from, you know, multifamily condominium developments is also certainly very important to me, so I would encourage you to, to vote yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers in favor?
My name is Clem McCollins, I'm a local lawyer and competitor of John's', and it should mean a lot that I'm here to speak on behalf of, of his endeavor then, right? I've known the Gallons, I've known the Quigs for my, my entire life, I've grown up here. I think you'll see that, or you'll agree that this is one of the most well-thought-out rezoning plans that you can imagine. John's taken the time to address every issue, he's worked with the county thoughtfully and thoroughly, and so every, every i has been dotted, every t has been crossed. He's accounted for the community, he's accounted for the environmental impacts, and this is easily the best use of this property that this, that anyone here can envision. It's got a family behind it that is the greatest environmental stewards of our area. They look out for everything that they do, they work hard, and they protect their, not only their investments, but our entire community and our environment. As it was alluded to, John's brother-in-law owns an ecotourism company, John is a real estate lawyer, Dr. Gallon has, has impacts on land... ecotourism company. John is a real estate lawyer. Dr. Gallin has impacts on landholdings throughout coastal Georgia, and it would be a travesty not to approve this PD as planned. Thank you.
Clem, sorry. The sound system here is horrible. Your last name, please?
Cullens.
Cullens.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Other speakers in favor? Got a few more, seems.
Good evening. I'm not sure I'm either in favor or...
Your name, please?
I'm in favor. Deb Cody.
Sorry.
C-O-D-Y, Cody.
Deb.
I just have a couple of questions. We've only been here for about two years, but I live across the marsh from the property. And having had experience, having lived in Florida and lived across from a restaurant, from a bayou, sound travels across the water. So, my question is, with the restaurant and the special event use, is there a time limit at night where, you know, it's going to stop? We're not going to have music and alcohol sales, and, you know, are we looking at good neighbors here that we're not going to have to worry about 2:00 a.m. I'm calling up to say, "Hey, can you turn the music down?" Or, you know, that's my concern, is just where are we with, you know, the maximum occupancy for the restaurant? Are we going to have these events that go on until all hours of the morning? I just don't know, because we haven't been here, and since we've been here, it's been closed.
Ms. Cody.
So, yeah, I'm just trying to find out what's going to, what the potential...
The curfew.
Yeah, exactly. I guess what is the curfew, and what is the, you know, where are we with that? That's my concern, so, just because I live there. And I look at it, and I hear it, so...
Okay, I'm not sure that was in favor.
If someone could address that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other speakers in favor?
Josh Winans. I've been here for six years, not a 25-year, 30-year person, but... Been up and on. Exactly. This has been a great spot for us to drop our kayaks in. My family, my wife and daughter, have literally kayaked to it, kayaked from it, every different direction we've kayaked. And there's zero impact in that, and they are proposing the exact same thing as it's been for years from before. So, that being said, I am totally in favor for it.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Van Waters. Excuse me, I'm sorry, getting nervous talking in front of people. I just wanted to obviously voice my support for this place. One thing I want to remind everybody of who may be in somewhat opposition of it is, we've been lamenting the loss of our character of our island. This place right here, to use Frank's words, pretty old school. And to me, this is maybe not the epitome, but this is a lot of what St. Simons is to me in the 20 years I've been here. It's a place you can go out, be in the marsh, you've got the boat ramps, the docks, everything we think of about St. Simons and the old-school character that we have, the quirkiness, the coolness, all of it's right there. I just think it would be horrible to lose the opportunity to maintain a facility like that where people can come have parties, and also think we just need to consider ourselves lucky that the place has fallen into the hands that it has. Because like what Mr. Cullen said, I cannot personally think of a better steward of the land than the family that has it. So, anyway.
Thank you. Other speakers in favor?
And I'm Jim Williamson. I have one of those who've been here 45 years. And, you know, I see this, and I see the history of it, and I'll be honest with you, practicing law here 45 years, if somebody had a client that owned it now, they came to me and said, "Do I need to do anything with it, or can I continue on? Is somebody going to stop me?" I'd tell them, "Well, just go on about your business. Just see if somebody could... If they try to stop you, come see me." I mean, it's been there that long. And now here we've got somebody that is trying to take a use that's not allowed and zone it into a use that is allowed, that you can control. And, you know, I think it's in everybody's best interest that this pass and that this family, who I can't say enough good about, get to go forward with what they've asked to do, because, you know, the county then has some control over it. Right now, I don't think we have any control over it. And it's just out there. It's just there. And it's been there so long, it would be hard to stop it. But now, we've given a chance with good parameters and good people trying to do the right thing, that I would certainly urge that y'all to recommend this to the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Oh, we got one in back.
My name is Phil Viviani. That's Vivian with an I at the end of it. All I want to tell everybody is, I set foot on St. Simons Island in 1951, and I've been living here and coming here since that time, 67 years. I've seen the destruction put by overdevelopment. This is such a great, great thing for us. So, I know you'll vote for it. Thank you.
My name's Mike Malone. I've lived on this island for 47 years. I've used the property for all 47 years. I've launched my boat there. I've fished, got stuck in the mud. I've known the Gallin family for over 40 years. They will do what they say, as they've stated in this request. I urge the committee to approve this rezoning.
Thank you. Okay, we still have six minutes left in the 30-minute period. Another speaker?
Sure.
Okay. We're setting a record tonight for favorable...
Hi, I'm Ally Dennington. I'm new, so I'm not really sure if my opinion counts very much.
Ally...
Ally Dennington. But I've actually been to Village Creek in the time that I've been here. We went for a little, I don't know, a little family event. Took my boys, and it was wonderful. And the family seems like they're very responsible. And, I mean, it just seems to me that if they've already been using this for all these years, that if you don't approve this under these circumstances, with this family, I can't imagine what you ever would approve. And it seems like you'd be buying a lawsuit that we're going to then have to pay for as taxpayers, so that's what I'm curious about. So, I think you should approve it. I'm in favor.
There you go, Ally.
Thank you. Okay. Other speakers? All right. We've exhausted the favorite speakers. We'll invite those who might be opposed. Please come forward, if you're brave enough. Okay.
Good evening, folks. My name is James Holland, and I've lived on the coast for about 50 years. And practically speaking, now, I'm talking about not professional knowledge, formal training, blah, 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 blah. I personally believe that I have more water experience, practical water experience, than anyone else in this room, okay? I made my living off the water for 23 years. Doing that, you get to see both sides of this equation, okay? The good side and the bad side. And I've been on to both sides, okay, and I admit it, but a lot more than a lot of these people in this room will. They don't want to talk about the bad side, but I've been there, okay? So, I know the both sides. Now, this is a tidal zone. We have two tides each day. We have two high tides, two low tides each day. I'm wondering where the photos are that were shown on this screen tonight. The photos are of low tide. They put on a good show, okay? You put on your beauty side when you're trying to sell something, all right? And I fully understand that. I used to do that with my crabs occasionally, show my best ones, and make sure somebody gets to buy something. Well, I also saw on one of these photos tonight at a half-tide, with boats parked inside the dock, between the dock and the marsh. My question to the applicant that showed this is, where would those boats be on low tide? They still going to be right there? Most likely, because they've got what I call bumpers on that dock, which is something cushioned to keep boats from ramming up against it and messing the boat up. And they're also down on both ends of this dock. Now, when I speak of something and look at it, I look at it from now from a purely environmental point of view, purely and absolutely. I recently took photos of this site. I recently filed a complaint about this site with the Coastal Resources Division, because if you want to own this type of property, you're responsible for it. And these people saw, they showed a beautiful, beautiful scenery tonight. There's no question about it. And I personally could write a small book about wildlife photos that I've taken in Village Creek. Village Creek, at this point, is one of the most, in my opinion, now, this is not CRD, this is my fishing opinion, is one of the most unpolluted creeks in the state of Georgia, or as tidal creeks go. There are no pipes going in there. We have no commercial anything on it until tonight's vote. Y'all may put something commercial on it. But my belief is, when I file a complaint, I file this complaint because I observed canoes and kayaks stowed in the marsh buffer, and what I believe is the marsh buffer. That's illegal. Everybody's talking about tonight how friendly and environmentally friendly these people are. Well, that's what you see. When you see their photos from tonight, you see the beauty of it. That's all, that's all most of these people want to see, the beauty of it. They don't want to see the ugly of it. Well, if it wasn't for people like me looking at the ugly stuff, you wouldn't have the beauty stuff. I hope y'all remember that and vote no on this tonight, because these people are not prepared to run an environmentally friendly outfit out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Invite other speakers opposed?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Parker Morgan. Mr. Hochschild here can attest that I am also from Glen County, although I suppose I'm now a carpetbagger coming down from Savannah this time, but it's always good to be home. I've been coming to some of the IPC meetings on South Harrington Road, Particular Matters now, for at least a year, I think. And I can, without question, I know y'all know, because you've been sitting at more of them, that this is the most support that any proposal down here has gotten. And I think that's a great testament to the applicant, to the Gallin family. Mr. McQuig, I called him in advance to ask him some questions and get some materials, and he was more than willing to share those with me. And I think a big part of the reason, too, that everyone's in support of this is mostly what you're seeing on the screen, that, you know, there are some limitations. I don't think the uses themselves are really an issue. The point I want to make to y'all about what we have in front of us tonight, and I know kind of procedurally it got here, because originally they wanted to do the conditional use, and then work with staff to do the PD text. And I would just suggest it would be highly unusual to have a PD text that specifically references some unseen other agreement, as that will be provided. Once you adopt the PD text, that goes in the zoning code, just like every other part of the zoning ordinance. And so, you know, the whole point of zoning, the reason it got introduced in the first place, was to provide some manner of reliability, stability. You can go pull the code. You can say, "All right, I can do X, Y, Z. I know exactly what it means." To provide in this that there is a third party, or not a third party, an outside agreement with the county that'll be entered into, I just don't think that's an appropriate way to have a PD text. And from speaking with Mr. McQuig, I fully believe him, and I know that they're working and they're willing to come to some sort of resolution on this boat ramp parking area that's been a significant problem for years now for the county. And my suggestion to y'all is, you know, you have all these options before you. There's certainly the ability to defer this, to allow the time to work out an acceptable agreement, so that you can vote on the whole package together, so that there's a certainty with what's being presented to the public. Because the other thing that I think is critical, everybody here is vouching for the applicant and family, which is great, which is what I would do if I was here to try and present this for approval. And I hope they own it and run it successfully for a long time. But the reality is, they will not always be the owners of this property. And for that reason, the time is now, especially when they're willing to work to get this suited for everyone, now is the time to try and get this resolved in a manner that will be a permanent solution for this boat ramp parking area. So, I would highly encourage y'all to defer this for now, to be able to allow that work that, again, has been submitted, and I think is in process, to be brought forward and really be properly referenced in the text, and what we mean when we say there will be something set aside for public access to that boat ramp parking area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Other speakers opposed? Please come forward. Okay. CNN will close the public hearing. We invite the applicant to please come back to the lectern. A few questions, concerns came up, not many. I took a couple of notes. Other commissioners, would you like to go first?
Well, I'm curious, is the horse a marsh buffer?
No idea. Buffer.
Buffer, yeah. Buffer? I thought you said buffer. Okay, buffer.
That's a great question for your attorney.
Commissioner Wilks, the understate law, there's a marsh jurisdiction line that the DNR goes out and delineates. And by state law, they have delineated a setback from that line of 25 feet. So, when they say the marsh buffer, that's what they're talking about.
Okay, buffer. I thought you said buffer, okay.
On that issue, we had some photographs shared with us that showed some of the kayaks that were, appear to be encroaching on the marsh buffer. Do you have any comment on that? Is that a one-time event, or...
There's no encroachment on the marsh buffer.
Okay.
The way that that marsh buffer's been explained to you is not exactly the way it is. There is a better legal definition that we haven't had a chance to discuss and tell you about, but that's all written in state code.
Okay.
There is an encroachment. No, sir.
Just put, all right, put the definition aside for the moment. I think we were sharing photographs that showed boats that were laying in what I would call the grass turf portion of the property.
They're on the grass, yes. They're not encroaching on the marsh buffer.
Okay. Your opinion, they're not in the...
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's clarity we're looking for.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Wilks, additional? Was that it?
What about the curfew? I know there's a county probably has an ordinance about that.
Yeah, Commissioner Wilks, Ms. Cody, who's been here for about two years, if she hasn't already had a sound disturbance problem, she's not going to see one, because it has been in operation those entire two years. There have been multiple dozens of events down there in 2016, 2017. This year, we've had multiple events at the property. If she hasn't heard the noise and hasn't complained about it, she won't be hearing any noise in...
any noise and complaining about it. We're not asking you to allow us to have some, you know, 2:00 AM curfew that no one else gets. We will completely abide by what the county zoning and ordinances allow, and restrict the property accordingly.
I'd like to say, you know, I think it's a sad state of affairs where we get, we can't trust people. I know that the parking is not part of this project. You could come to us and say, if you do this, I'll do that, and you're not doing that. You're coming to do, just for this particular property, that parking lot is a entirely different issue. And, you know, I'm disappointed that there's some folks who don't believe the integrity of the McQuig and the Gallin family, that they'll do the right thing in this. I know you'll do the right thing. And because I know of your integrity and your desire to maintain this in an environmentally sensitive way, I'm going to vote for this. And I can't, I can't think of any other family or company in Glen County that would take care of this property better than your family would.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. McQuig, so, I do want to clarify one thing. This is not an application for character, because you guys have passed with flying colors, and we know that. It is an opportunity for us to hold our county accountable. And the lady who mentioned lawsuits, that's exactly what we're trying to prevent, are lawsuits against us. And basically, what we've, we know now is that what's been going on for 40, 50 years has been illegal or against the zoning for conservation and preservation. So in saying that, we are trying to prevent any lawsuits. And in fact, you know, I see exactly what you're saying, it's been going on for 40, 50 years, and, you know, it should, and you're asking, you want to clean it up. You're trying to clean it up and work with the county. And, and like I said with you, and I know the boat ramp is separate, but, and it's not you, but I'm not trusting with the boat ramp, as it's, I'm trying to secure it with the county to make sure that those, that they do have access. So it's not you that is in question, in my mind, because I emailed and asked, just like you asked me, and I don't know why, something has not been worked out. So this allows us an opportunity for that.
Okay. Ms. Katie, I can provide you with some context for that. Mr. McQuig initially sent a draft lease to us, I think at the very end of August. I was out of town for about two weeks on vacation at a conference, so I didn't see that email until I got back about mid-September. Since that time, our office has been in contact with Mr. McQuig. We were working through a number of different scenarios about the lease. We've talked about a lease, we've talked about an easement, and just today, we approached the subject of outright purchase of the property. It's not just our office that needs to review these proposals, it's a lot of people in the county staff, unfortunately. A government as big as Glen County has a certain amount of bureaucracy that goes along with it. I know people that are on the outside would like things to go a little faster than they do, but again, a lot of different scenarios are out there, we're still exploring all of those, we're still exploring all of our options to get a long-term, and if possible, permanent, solution to the parking out there.
Okay. Other questions?
Hi. I want to thank you. I read in your proposal here that you plan on not paving the road, and I'm really thankful for that. I don't think we need more pavement with runoff issues. But I do have something about the language that's in here, and it's on page two, D1 4. You know, language has, has to be interpreted when it's kind of vague. And I'm finding the language on the last sentence of four right above A, it says, "The following list is intended to be representative, but not all-inclusive." And that sort of language is vague to me. That means, I can do all these things I have listed, oh, but I could do something else. But I don't know what that something else is, because it's not listed. So I find that language troublesome and vague and overly broad, terms, I know you understand what I'm saying. So can we change that, so that it's not open-ended like that? I mean, if there's something else you intend to do there, let us know and let us put it in here. Other than that, let's limit it to what you have in here.
I think it's a very good question, and I think the answer that I'm going to give you is, we've worked with the county staff on this, this is the proposed use of the property, this is the proposed PD text. I don't think that we can line through items and have you approve them at this time, but I'll defer the county staff to let me know if we can do that or not.
Yeah, as Mr. McQuig said, we did review it, and I felt comfortable with it. In a lot of cases, we have, we have PD texts that have been approved in the past, that you might just have a, you know, term without really being defined. So I feel that this does help define limited commercial marina. However, you know, this is up for Planning Commission's recommendation, so if the commission feels that there, there should be more of a limitation to it, I mean, that's definitely within your purview. I think what this, this helps to do is that gives staff that understanding that if something does come to us that isn't specifically in this list, at least we can make interpretation that this is representative, it is very close, it's very similar to what, you know, what the uses are that are listed. So it definitely helps with our future interpretation, but definitely if the commission wants to go a different direction, I'd be happy to listen to that.
I just want you to know I'm uncomfortable with that language.
And Stephanie, I know we had discussed this, do we have a definition for wildlife refuge? Did we ever define that?
It's intended to be representative.
I know we didn't. And Sean, we had also talked about the house, the building, someone in the audience brought up a residential dwelling. I think you made it clear that only if the existing structure went away.
Right.
Correct.
That's right. And it says clearly it's spelled out in the PD text.
And I'm really saying that for the person who mentioned the residential dwelling, it would only?
That is so far-fetched as being a use, but we tried to, when I was working with the county staff with Mrs. Leaf, to mimic the language of the CP. And it had the same language in there about a caretaker's residence.
Right.
But it had no limitations on that.
Right.
So can I put, you know, a 15,000 square foot building on there for a caretaker's residence? I don't know. Your CP text doesn't say anything about it. There's no limitations to it. So I'm limiting it here. I'm limiting, you can't have multifamily, you can't have all that stuff. You limit the size of the dwelling.
Right.
If it has ever uses a dwelling, if there's ever a wildlife refuge. What's a wildlife refuge? Look at the county zoning text to see what it is.
Exactly.
I don't know.
And I'm not sure that we do.
So that's so far-fetched. The whole purpose of putting that provision in there was to make it clear to y'all, and the county staff, and the board commissioners, hey, you guys got problems with your zoning texts, and we're trying to copy the CP zoning, and we can't do it, because your definitions are so unclear. So I'm going to help you, and I'm going to tell you, if it has ever uses a wildlife refuge, the limitations on residential use are the following. Bang. That's what we did in our zoning text.
Okay. I'm sorry. You have in your packet here that you have a dwelling unit, maximum number's going to be one, you're going to have one dwelling unit, and you do have a size in here of 4,075 square feet.
Yes, ma'am.
So is that the care, is that the dwelling we're talking about?
If there's ever a dwelling, and if there's ever a wildlife refuge out there, that's the maximum size it could ever be.
Okay, so there, I mean, we had heard comments that there was no, no size attached to that, but there is, there's up to 4,075 square feet.
Your CP zoning now has no limitations. It is not your use.
I understand that, but this is answering a question that was asked about the size of the building, the caretaker or the residence or whatever it is, but there is a size in here.
There is, yes, ma'am.
I just want them to know that, that's answering one of their questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to come back with you about the uncomfortable language I was talking to you earlier. Are you willing to change that, so that it's not so open-ended? We have, we can amend this text right here, right now. We don't have to, I mean, I appreciate staffs, you know, saying that if it's left open-ended, they can make a determination at some future time if something is not in this list, and they can tell if it's compatible or not. I'm not comfortable with that. If we're limiting this site to the intent of a conservation platform, then I'd like to see it narrowed and not left open-ended like that.
Commissioner Watson, are you talking about D4, where it says, not possible to fully anticipate?
It says, this is the language that says, it says, "The following list is intended to be representative, but not all-inclusive." So that means other, you know, we're approving this list, but we're also leaving it open-ended.
So let me, let me address that first. The first answer is, I don't want to amend it, okay? The reason is, I'm not so smart as to go pull this zoning text out of my head and put it on paper. I stole this from a no-approved zoning text that y'all have already passed. I didn't create this. I grabbed that language from about five different zoning texts that y'all have already approved, and just threw it down in this PD text. So I'm not smart enough to try to?
What I'm asking you to do, is I'm asking you to take ownership of this language.
And I'll take ownership, and I'll say, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, one more quick question, and maybe more for staff, and I've already kind of asked you about the conditional use permit, which you originally had asked for. So, you know, like you agreed to, PD comes with, it's open-ended. And I don't know if this is doable, but it can, a conditional use permit, and I know the things that aren't allowed under CP, but since they've been going on and not acknowledged 40, 50 years, add, or grandfather those in. I know I've already asked this, but I kind of wanted a clear answer on that, maybe not from you, but from staff, or both?
If you want me to answer, I'm happy to.
Either or. Because it's kind of the opposite of what Desiree is saying, kind of, you know, rather than limit the PD, why don't we stick to conditional use for conservation and preservation? And it's, what's been going on for 30, 40, 40, 50 years is?
Not allowed.
Not allowed anyway, but it's kind of the opposite. I'm just trying to find a happy medium.
So I want to address that, and I'm going to defer to Mrs. Leaf about it. I've had months of discussions with the county about this. I've produced reams of paper about the history of the use of this property. I have affidavits that you wouldn't believe that I presented that prove that this property is grandfathered in. I have chosen, at my request, the family agreed, that we would choose this venue to present the rezoning as opposed to going to court, which I'm pretty confident we're going. The reason that we've chosen that is, we want to show that we're limiting the usage of this property as opposed to letting it just open wide up. I heard some comments earlier about, what about the next owner? You let me go to court and open this up as a grandfathered use and look out. Then you've really opened the door to bad, nefarious uses of this property you don't want to see. Approving this rezoning takes care of all of it. You cure it all right now. So we tried. The county has no authority, the county staff has no authority, to issue an opinion that this property is grandfathered. And although I pleaded with them over and over, they can't do it. Talk to county attorneys, can't do it. This is something that's above them. So if we want to kick it back to a different forum, that's fine, we can do that, it's just a real pain in the neck. You want to avoid lawsuits. I don't want to go to lawsuits. You know, it's, it's just a long period of time to get a resolution for something that can be resolved right here willingly with additional restrictions. So, you know, I'll defer to the county staff for the rest of the answer, but I think we've done everything we possibly could, and there is no provision under CP zoning to have a conditional use for the past and current uses. You can't do it. We tried. That's why we got here with the rezoning.
Let me expound on what John has said. To be clear, when we say grandfather, what we mean is, it was a legally existing use in place at the time that a zoning was changed to make it illegal. So that's fight number one, when you're talking about grandfather. Was it in continuous use, and was it that use that was banned, and that's fight number two. And then, you know, under, let's just say they came in for a conditional use permit for a commercial marina, because it's not defined, every single use that could fall under the umbrella of a commercial marina is not defined. For instance, is an event space something that is part of a commercial marina use? That'd be another fight we could have. So as John said, they came to us, they asked us, county staff, to issue them an opinion saying, this is all fine, you can continue operating. Staff wasn't comfortable with that, and the solution that was hit upon was, rather than go to court and mitigate those things, that they would come forward with the rezoning that's before you tonight.
I guess what I, a little confusing I keep going back to is that it was on our agenda at the last meeting for CUP, and it wasn't pulled until the meeting. That's where I'm confused, how did it even get that far?
And I'd be glad to answer that question, but I'll also defer to county staff to have them lay in on it, too. So as we were having conversations with county staff, the first thing we did was say, hey, let's get a conditional use permit, because under CP, an authorized conditional use is a commercial marina. As we discussed that, and as Mr. Worley just stated, the problem with us defining the conditional use that you could approve as a commercial marina is, where's the definition? The county does not have a definition of any limitations of a commercial marina. I had discussions with some community members, and a concern was, well, are you going to store and sell fuel? That's a very good question. No, we're not going to do that. Well, does your conditional use permit limit it? I can't do that, because the procedure for approval of a conditional use permit doesn't let me tell you what the limitations are. You take it as it is. So because of the procedures, as I understand them, for approval of a county, of conditional use permit, we couldn't limit or further define the use of the property. It's either a commercial marina, or it's not. I'll defer to you, Mrs. Leaf.
Yeah, and Mr. McQuig represented that well. I mean, that is how the conversation went. Initially, we thought the, you know, use as a commercial marina would be appropriate for the conditional use, but really the concern was just how, how intense could that be? And an intense commercial marina that, you know, all of us know about, just did not seem to be, you know, all appropriate for this location. So that's really where the conversation evolved, was as we started looking into it and kind of delving into it more, the, the conditional use permit just was, was not the right, right tool to really get at what they were trying to do. So that's really why it kind of changed midstream, and they applied for the PD, and we noticed it up as such. So it was initially noticed for a commission agenda, and it was taken off the agenda, but once something is noticed, we do leave it on the agenda, and then just at that point, it was deferred indefinitely, because we, we knew this was going to be coming forward as the PD. So if that answers your question.
Okay. Can we move on? CUP is not on the table tonight. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, Chairman, let me?
Make a motion.
entertain a motion.
I move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, approval of application ZM 3890, subject to the adopted plan development text and site plan presented on October 16, 2018.
I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'll go ahead, I'll discuss. I have to say, I'm disappointed in the applicant's response that they're not going to list exactly what they intend to do out there, and they're going to leave it open-ended. That bothers me greatly. I'm not questioning their integrity, I'm not questioning their honesty, I'm not questioning their intent, but I'm just saying, the language allows for something that's open-ended, and that bothers me. I commend them for what they're doing, but it, but that, that bothers me. And to say that, well, that language was taken from somewhere else, that's not an answer. Also, in the past, we approved an event center, and we put curfews on it for the surrounding neighbors. So why? So why is a curfew not appropriate? If they're going to have an outside event center, why would a curfew not be appropriate? That's my comments.
Okay. Ms. Kate? Sorry.
Amendment to non-motion for that purpose would be accepted. No, we had a noise order.
Yes, commissioners? We have a noise order. Having noise ordinance, that depending on the time of day, there's a certain distance from the, the source of the noise. Also, I think one of the concerns that was raised was about serving alcohol, what hours, we have ordinances that say what time service of alcohol has to stop as well. But we don't have a curfew, per se.
Ms. Kate?
And my issue is more with the, the text itself and the way it was presented, like Desiree pointed out, with the, the PD CP does not exist. There's just so many questions that aren't defined in our ordinances, and there's just some information we're missing, not necessarily from the applicant. That's my thought, there's some information missing, and that's vital, I feel like.
Let me ask, there was a discussion about that district, the terminology could be changed. Can you expand on that?
Sure. That, that is something that if the commission would like to add that as a condition of this approval, or just mention that in, in the motion, that it would be changed from PD CP to PD, so that it does go before the board of commissioners, that the, that the current revised draft that goes in front of the board of commissioners just says PD, it does not say PD CP. They might be appropriate.
I would request that the, I want to vote for this, but I'm just having trouble with it, with this open-ended business. So I would request that the motion be amended to drop the PD CP district, so that it just reads as a PD district, and that the, the list here, that this language be changed so that it's a definitive list and not an open-ended list.
I'll, I'll agree to that amendment, with my motion.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion. Do we have a second for the amendment?
Yes, now second.
Okay.
Yes, you have to vote on the amendment now.
So all those in favor for the amendment, please raise your hand. Forward to all those opposed?
I'm going to recuse, or abstain, because I do not have all the information that I need.
Okay. So the amendment passes four in favor and one abstain for the amendment.
So commissioners, before you take a vote on the now amended motion, can we clarify that it is a motion to recommend approval on the condition that the reference to PD CP be changed just to PD, and that the language on page two, under section D1, four, be amended to make the list all-inclusive?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? Call for a vote?
Call for a vote.
All those in favor of the motion and as amended? No, this is for the motion. All those in favor, please have a show of hands. All those opposed?
Abstain of the amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, I made a statement at the beginning. I am definitely in favor of it because of the, it's not being used as a residential multi-family venue, and that pleases me, since there's been so much overdevelopment in the Harrington area.
Okay, just a point of order here, where we have passed the motion, it passed four in favor and one abstention. All those in favor? All right, okay.